Michelle, is everything set up over there?
Yes.
Is that a thumbs up?
Yes.
Okay, don't forget you got to press if the red light comes on.
I did, but I forgot to talk into the mic.
Okay, okay. All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and call to order the Thursday, October 3rd, 2019, meeting of the Reno City Planning Commission, and I will ask everybody to please rise for the Pledge of Leagance, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Velto to lead us this evening.
... To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, can I have roll call, please?
Okay, here we go. Kathleen Taylor.
Here.
Peter Gower. Is absent, sorry. Ed Hawkins.
Here.
John Marshall.
Here.
Paul Alievus.
Here.
Alex Velto.
Here.
Mark Johnson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. Based on the stack I have, I think everybody realizes you need to fill one of these things out, but if you're just walking in the room and you want to make comment on this or any other items, see Michelle to fill out one of these. First person I have to speak tonight is Carl Hall.
Thank you Chair Johnson. Good evening, Commission members. My name is Carl Hall, and I'm the Reno City Attorney. I wanted to take a moment and recognize the great work of Greg Salter. He's been representing clients for over three decades. He's been in public service for over 27 years. He's been at the Attorney General's Office, City of Sparks, Washoe County, and tomorrow will be his last day representing the city of Reno. Greg's mentorship, friendship, guidance has been unparalleled. His work ethic is beyond reproach. He's been a great asset to our office. He's going to be missed, and so I'd like to have everybody give him a standing ovation because he deserves it. He's a great man. He's a good man. And finally, you might notice from the pamphlet that he's hosting a bar at Coney Island. I don't know if everybody's invited, but anyway, thank you Greg for your great service. You're a great man, and I've really enjoyed working with you.
Thank you, Carl. You'll be here for the rest of the night, so we'll give you a few more platitudes before the evening's over. How's that? All right. Okay, next request to speak I have is from Carrie Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Carrie Doyle from the Doyle Law Office, here on behalf of the Society of the Preservation of Verd- Society for the Preservation of Verdai, and I'm here tonight to comment on the Meridian South project in general. As you're aware, this project has been broken into several phases. In June 2018, the City Council heard one of the applications and expressly told the developer that they needed to bring all of the phases to the Planning Commission together, not piecemeal, or as Councilwoman Jordan called it, "death by a thousand cuts." This development is huge, and the cumulative impacts cannot be accurately assessed unless all of the phases are presented at the same time, so that the public and the deciding bodies can make decisions on all of those phases at once. We do understand tonight they may be requesting a continuance for the item that's on your agenda. However, in addition to asking you to deny their application tonight because of the failure to comply with the City Council's directive, we would ask that in making agendas in the future, you ensure that they do not schedule phases one and two on a single night, phases five and six on a single night. It should be all six phases, any special use permits, the entire project brought as one and presented as one, so that both the public and the deciding body can accurately assess the cumulative impacts, and they don't suffer death by a thousand cuts. We have currently in litigation moved for an injunction to prevent BT South from presenting to you in this manner, but until the court acts, we need you to deny them to enforce the City Council's decision. And BT South has conceded in the motion practice that it would be absolutely acceptable for the Planning Commission or the City Council to reject their applications and enforce that directive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, I have a lot of forms up here, so please, let's hold the applause to a minimum, or as I've said before, applaud us, because that's what we really like, makes us happy. Next is Steve Wolgast.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Steve Wolgast. I want to share with you a little bit of what's going on in my neck of the woods, because I think it bears on your efforts. Next slide, please.
You can click the, use the mouse or the...
Thank you. Down near me, you can see the big construction going on at Summit Mall called Inova. If you go by there, it practically looks like a city in terms of the level of construction. Going down the hill, you know, on Veteran's Circle, we have the new apartment complex going in on Veteran's Circle. I think it's 11 three-story buildings. Next to that is Single Family Homes at the Esprit Development. Next to that is Carmella Ranch. Carmella Ranch is very hard to photograph, because from any position, it seems to just go to the horizon in terms of the development and the size. Also along Veterans Parkway, there's still a lot of construction going on. These pictures are about a week old. Well, these are all single-family. Also, multiple-family going on in the same area. There are duplexes being built at the Autumn Wood Development at the base of Zalesi. Near the South Valleys Library, you have the Meadows. It was called Mountain Gate 78. Symphony Ranch is a little closer to me. This is partly occupied, partly still under construction. And I guess the point I want to make is for the arguments you hear, that we absolutely need to build at rampant pace. I would argue that we are building at a rampant pace, and some of the concern about a lack of inventory is already being addressed. It's going to take some time to absorb all the new construction that's already being built. And with talk of a slowdown, I just read in the San Francisco Chronicle that housing prices have been slumping for the last six months in the Bay Area. I don't know if it's an indicator for us, but having a few moments to absorb what is currently being built seems like it would make sense. Beyond that, there are 60,000 dwelling units with approved PUDs and tentative maps that are not yet built. There are an additional 20,000 to 30,000 buildable lots confirming to existing zoning. And I think the point I would like to make, it's hard to justify special high-density zoning amendments when there's already so much capacity to build on existing lots. Thank you. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Next is Mary Murley.
I'm not used to speaking in public, so... Okay, I'm addressing item 6.5 on the addenda. I'm a resident directly to the west of the site. I'm not opposed to the construction of apartments or condos on this site. Special use permits require that all general findings be met. I'm opposed to this application based on four of the eight findings. Finding E, the proposed site location and scale. Staff says buildings with heights of 45 feet or greater have been approved and constructed in the vicinity. This is disingenuous. Example one is at the allowable height, not the proposed height of this permit, and should not be applied as a rationale to this application, although it does serve as an example of scale as it looms monolithic over the neighborhood. The second example was built as a commercial hotel and should not be considered a rationale for the application or a wise prototype of multifamily planning or development. The hundreds of existing homes in multifamily in the neighborhood, all built at lower heights, are the true examples. Finding F, the project does not create adverse environmental impacts. Based on Exhibit D, Shadow Study, western residences will be impacted at the proposed height. For months of the year, there will no longer be morning sunlight for the home, yard, or plantings. At the allowable height, the residents will still get some morning light, although yards and plantings would be affected. Finding H, the structure has been designed such that the window placement and height do not adversely affect the privacy of existing residences. Staff recommends that balconies be removed from the second and third floors on the east elevation to limit privacy impacts, known as Condition Six. Condition Six should be applied to the west side also, as the same privacy impacts will occur for existing residential users. Finding D, the proposal mitigates traffic impacts. The site includes 23 off-street parking spaces and references 12 on-street spaces. It assumes that 23 out of 64 residents will have cars, and approximately 2/3 of the tenants will not. On-street parking spaces are already in use by existing residents, visitors, and homeless. Demand for those spaces will increase with the loss of the city parking lot, even without the additional new residents. In closing, the design in this application is significantly different from the allowable design that was presented when the city considered the sale of the property. The DDA with the city is based on the approval of this application, or the developer can rescind. Will my argument still be taken into consideration with the DDA at stake? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Erica White.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Erica White. I'm a resident of Verdai. I'm a retired developer, and I'm here to ask that you deny the continuance that's going to be asked tonight. We have gone around this circle with these developers over and over again. They are denying and excusing and avoiding the fact that council did tell the developers for Meridian One and Two, all the way through Six, it was a remand, and that it had to come back, One through Six, inclusively. So I don't quite understand why the developers are getting away with this. We're not going away, are we? How many people here are in favor of what I just said? There we go. So, I'm a developer, and I'm not about to allow this to happen in our community with the way that they're handling this situation. This should be a prime example of what they are and who they are. We are the community, and we're not going away. We will not go away. So, I ask your help, for your help, and for your cooperation and understanding that we can go through hoops with them, with the developers, but that doesn't mean that they're going to win. We will. In addition to that, City Council members stated that on June 6, 2018, that the city would not provide services, or the city could not provide services for fire, EMS outside of the due response time, safety. The RPD stated that they had concerns on adequately servicing the properties. Mutual aid had ad hoc, excuse me, not automatic aid. The incident commander has to be on the scene to call for additional help, which is calling a delay in response time. Mutual aid does not address the EMS response. They... I'm sorry. They have real issues with the traffic, drainage, and flooding. Concerns for the blockage of Garson Overpass, semis versus autos versus bicycles. Bicycles were the only one that has a potential solution for. Services infrastructure drainage are tentative map findings DGHIJ and SUP findings CNF. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Michelle, do we have any additional request to speak forms under public comment?
Not on this item, no.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to item number four, approval of the minutes. I'm looking for a motion on the minutes from Wednesday, September 4th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstentions?
Mr. Marshall, I abstain.
Thank you.
Alex Velto, I abstain.
Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on to next item is item five, City Council Liaison Reports.
There are none at this time.
Thank you very much. With that, I'm going to move on to item six, Public Hearings. First item on our agenda is case number LDC 18-00087, Meridian 120 South, Villages Three and Four. We will start with a presentation from the applicant. I have no presentation from the applicant. Do I have a staff report?
So I'm going to, I missed up here. For the record, Angela Fuas, Planning Manager. We did receive an email today from the applicant's representative acknowledging that they would like to, requesting before the Planning Commission, they would like to continue tonight's agenda item to a time uncertain while they work with the adjacent property owners on some items related to the development.
Okay. All right, so is there any additional report from staff beyond that?
There is not. So at this point, it is up to the Planning Commission to determine if you are comfortable with that continuance.
Okay, well, in keeping with the standard format, I will classify that as my presentation and my staff presentation. So I will ask Commissioners for disclosures, and then I will open it up for public comment before I bring it back for discussion on the request. So with that, I will start with Commissioner Alievus.
Commissioner Alievus, I have previously visited the site and spoken with the applicant's representatives and received emails on this.
Commissioner Marshall, familiar with the site and read a lot of emails.
Commissioner Taylor, familiar with the site, met with the applicant's representative, received a lot of emails.
The microphones are on. We'll ask them to turn them up. Commissioner Johnson, I received and read the emails, spoke with the applicant's representative, and visited the site.
Commissioner Velto, I spoke with the applicant's representatives and read emails regarding the subject.
Commissioner Hawkins read emails, visited the site, talked with several residents, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'm going to open public comment on this item. I have numerous forms here. I have a number of them that have been marked as not wishing to make a statement, so I'm going to read those first. If you do wish to make a statement based on that, let me know, and we'll bring you up and give you three minutes. So I have E. Gersovich in opposition, "Before massive housing is considered, infrastructure should be in place, roads, Medicare, fire, water, sewage, and schools." P. Gersovich also in opposition, "Before new houses, we need to plan and develop infrastructure, roads, water, schools, firehouses, exits to Highway 15 in case of fire, and hospitals." Colleen and Frederick Cassidy in opposition, "Objection to the building on land previously designed open space by 2004 by the developer and the city. We object to..." Sorry. "...reining wildlife passages and habitat that was previously preserved." Thank you. Ronald Steele also in opposition, "Don't ruin community, easy in on development." Alyssa Nguyen in opposition, "These builders want to ruin the environment, and these are too many houses and changes for such a small area." Megran, sorry, Megron Tinkem, sorry for pronunciation, also in opposition. Jared Dillard in opposition, "Been in the construction field almost 20 years and have seen what poor planning has done to the area. I believe this will be another example. Please don't sacrifice an amazing area to poor planning due to overgrowing in Reno." Lonnie Weaver in opposition, "Fire access and traffic on overpass, not enough exits." Julie Bog in opposition, and Paul McNeillage in opposition, inappropriate density. Okay. Those who did wish to speak, we'll start with Addie Argeras.
Addie Argeras, for the record, I want to point out again that the Meridian projects are over the allocated amount of DU's for the Boomtown properties. The first developer on the south side does not get to grab all the DU's they want. This is tentative map finding E. Water, I want to go back to water. I want to address the memo dated October 2nd that adds Condition Number 20 to the tentative map. The water code is a three-part code. Surface water, and this is applicable to Tamwah. Tamwah's purveyor, this has been met. Tamwah line at final map. Tamwah now owns the water system, but the inner tie won't be in until mid-2021 if all goes well. Projects, tentative maps must comply with code as submitted, when submitted, not some unknown time in the future. This condition is an admission. The tentative map is not in compliance with code, and as such, is a basis for denial. Tentative map findings A, B, C, and SUP finding C have not been met and cannot be met until some unknown time in the future. In order to get the non-compliant water system approved in January 2016, the developer knowingly misrepresented facts to the city. The developer knew about the court agreement for Tamwah and the RMC for surface water. The water system is the subject of a judicial review that states, "Since the city approved the system once, they should also approve it again." Stephen Moloff represented one of the property owners who sued for Tamwah service. Boomtown, the owner of the water service, also sued to have Tamwah service the properties. Moloff is now a party to litigation that is trying to undo what he helped make binding. This misrepresentation of facts has set into motion premature development in an area where the City Council has stated services cannot be provided and the infrastructure is inadequate to handle the growth. These admissions by the council address tentative map findings D, G, and numerous others, as well as SUP finding C not being met. And this is for the developer. An audit trail of lies never disappears. Over here is a payment schedule that is supposed to be paid per house at final map. It's past due. Thank you.
Next is Fletcher Gilson, followed by Alice House.
Fletcher Gilson, Bel Air Ranch. We have been over this time after time, and the disappointing part of this whole thing is, is really nothing's changed. We come to these meetings, they tell us that they've got a flood plan, they talk about all the different things that are going on, that they're working on, but they never bring us any facts, and they never get anything done. In flood areas, which there's several, basically, after talking to the DOT, they said even the feds would have to be involved in looking at this flood plan because it flooded over I-80, the entrance at Garson Road. Also, we've had several things brought up in the meetings that have just been, just been crazy to look at, talking about the easements and different things to people that have water rights below. They said they would pipe it to get it to the lots. That sounds like a great idea, and when asked the question, "What would happen if the pipe plugs?", they said they would clean it once a year. What happens if it plugs at the beginning of the area? Does that mean these people don't get their water? How are they going to get to their head gates? It only takes a pine cone to mess the head gate up, okay? It starts plugging, you get algae, you get sticks, you get leaves, you get everything else in it, and this thing plugs off, but yet no one's ever answered any of these questions. I mean, we've been doing this for like, three years. As far as I'm concerned, we've made little or no progress on pretty much any of this. Again, I think that's, we talk about growth paying for growth, but yet they're trying to supervent this by separating everything out, and even in, what was it, two meetings ago where they said, "Well, I think that's, you know, the schools are the city of Reno's problems, and the roads, you know, because we're just doing this little project." They're trying to separate everything out and not get, not get the whole thing done. I just feel like, I'm frustrated. I'm very frustrated. I think everyone in this room is frustrated. You come to the meetings, I mean, they stated a lot of things that were totally not true. We have an agreement with Steamboat Ditch. I can't tell you how many times I've heard that one. And this is right after we talked to Steamboat Ditch and say, "Are you talking to them? Have you got an agreement? Sound great." I mean, if they would agree to something, I'm sure it'd be good. I think they're a good bunch of people. I'd like to hear that. When the first time I heard it, I was like, "Great, we got an agreement on that. We're going to solve that flooding problem." But that was all untrue. They never talked to these people. They don't have any agreement. We don't have any plan. We don't have anything in writing. We're really no more ready to go than the man in the moon. Thank you very much.
Next is Alice House, followed by Carrie Doyle.
My name is Alice House. I live in the Bel Air Ranch Estates subdivision. A plan for problems facing the development in our area must coincide with the new development and be implemented at the same time the new development goes forward. This is stated in the Morrison-Garson Overlay Handbook. There are big problems that must be addressed before the Meridian projects are considered. Water supply, Tamwah water lines are not even close to being in place. Some strides have been made, but they are years out in being able to provide lines to feed these huge projects. It has been stated years ago that the Verdai aquifer is not adequate to sustain this kind of growth. It is being overpumped and diminishing with the developments taking place now in Verdai. Tamwah must have its lines in place before any more development is improved. Fire safety, there is no fire station in Verdai. There are no fire hydrants, there's not even a volunteer department. We are outside the eight-minute response required, response time required by law, no matter what Google Maps state. I cannot drive to the responding station on a bluebird day in my car in that amount of time. I've tried. We are a wildland urban interface fire area, very dangerous. Our property and all their proposed Meridian One through Six projects border the Toyube National Forest. We have only one way in and out of our area, Garson Road to the Garson Road I-80 overpass. The overpass is a narrow two-lane bridge with no margin for error. The on-and-off ramps are confusing, short, and... The on and off ramps are confusing, short, and dangerous. The ramp going west to I-80 is a group of cement barriers going through a parking lot to a small roundabout entering a very short ramp to the freeway. Very, very confusing. Now, let's imagine fire emergency personnel with all their large trucks, fire tenders, and equipment coming in, and a very, and very panicked people in cars and trucks pulling trailers with large panicked animals out of the area on this very bridge. It's a recipe for death. The fires in this area almost always come from the west and move to the east. That is the direction of the prevailing winds driving the firestorms east directly into our subdivisions and any new subdivision proposed. We will be driving east into the firestorm and smoke so dense that you can't see the hood of your vehicle trying to reach safety. Waiting for the Meridian 5, 6, before addressing this danger is beyond stupid. It's ludicrous. The time for safer roadways, second and possibly third exits are now. I'm submitting a picture, I think it's in front of you, of my house in the 1996 Wildland Fire. It's right here, too. This firewall is fueled by brush only. There were no trees on that acreage. It was huge. Large animals, people's beloved pets, where, well, the rest of it is in front of you, so please, I urge you to read it. It's important information.
We have it, and it has been entered into the record.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carrie Doyle, I saw hers. Okay. She also has a statement to be put into the record here. Next is Catherine Smith, followed by Ed Koffer.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Smith. I came to Reno in 1957. We built our home in 1970 within Blue Heron Park because it was zoned one acre agricultural. The rural aspect, the adjacent tree-covered hills and Verdai's open-space charm made it ideal. I'm totally dependent on my well. Fire and flooding are my major concerns. The proposed development looks possible on paper. Those who have lived here find many flaws in plan. Conditions of approval need to be reexamined. Please do not rush to amend by ordinance these findings. Water quality can't be preserved if the aquifer is not recharged. No recreational needs are obviously met in this city-type subdivision. The zoning will not protect adjacent existing property from flood, landslide, or natural disaster such as fire. I saw what happened in the previous presentation, live. It was not fun. Meridian 120 South does not take into account the physical limitations of the land. When you turn a meadow on an alluvial plain into a concrete-covered, multi-roofed development, you create city responsibility for the flooding. How will this promote health and general welfare? Since this is a piece of the development, and affordable housing is included, when do we see the overall plan? Are the Bel Air Ranch and Blue Heron Park considered for protection and preservation as rural neighborhoods? Please, let's keep Verdai more like Verdai used to be. Don't, don't turn it into California, transplanted. Thank you.
Next is Ed Koffer, followed by Kathleen Smith.
Good evening. For the record, Ed Koffer, I live in the Blue Heron subdivision. All of us that live in Verdai appreciate the opportunity to again express our concerns for this project and the other projects that impact our community. The developer has been ordered by the city council to present all six phases of this development together as one package. This development encompasses more than 500 houses. It's a regionally significant development which has a huge impact on the village of Verdai. The developer has ignored this requirement and continues to attempt piecemeal approvals of the individual phases as they're attempting to do tonight. This tentative map is deficient in a number of areas. A number of areas which my neighbors and I will address. By the city's requirements, all tentative maps must be in full compliance when they're submitted. Neither the residents nor the city can address compliance issues until the entire development package can be reviewed and to determine those requirements. You cannot do that on a piecemeal basis. The city of Reno cannot continue their former practice of granting tentative map approval and figuring out the engineering and the impact after the project is built. Swan Lake is a classic example of how poorly this procedure works. If a tentative map is improved, the residents of Verdai can no longer address the mega-impacts to their community caused by the regional development of this and other projects. Some of our concerns are the density. The density caused by two- and three-story condos in a low-density suburban environment must be mitigated. Garson Road overpass, this is perhaps one of the most serious considerations that we must address. The Garson, the Garson overpass was constructed in 1964 as a narrow two-lane overpass. It was constructed prior to the Boomtown Hotel and Casino expansion. It was constructed prior to the KOA campground. It was constructed prior to Cabela's Megastore, plus or minus a million square feet of office and warehouse, the 500-home subdivision on Old Highway 40, and the 100-plus-house subdivision which is going in on Bates. The overpass is already overcapacity and must be widened and reinforced. The overpass does not have a bike path or a pedestrian walkway. Thousands of semi-trucks, trailers, local residents, traffic, and cyclists utilize this crossing every day. We must conduct a comprehensive traffic study. Ingress and egress, the Bel Air has one way in and it's the same way out. Once you're in the Bel Air Ranch or the Blue Heron subdivision, you're on narrow country lanes that are, that have irrigation ditches on both sides. There's no sidewalks, there's no curbs, there's no gutters. Trying to evacuate the people that are there is very difficult. In 1996, I couldn't get my horses out. We lost two, and they perished. It was a miserable death. So I ask you to please consider the emergency ingress and egress which is so important to the life and welfare of the residents. Thank you very much.
Kathleen Smith, followed by Erica White.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Smith. I live in the Bel Air Ranch subdivision. I represent five generations of Verdai residents, and as this is a very emotional thing for me because I've seen our very unique little village just blossom in the last basically two years. I feel a bit discouraged, and I have to say that this developer, I don't believe, has reached out to any of the citizens, and I think the continuance is probably a false continuance because I don't know of anyone here who he has contacted to find out what our concerns are. And I'm sure that many people in this room feel the same disappointment, that there's, there's no conversation, there's no give on the developer's part. Because I was a bit hopeless, I began looking at what you, the city planners, and the city council have in store for the future of the Reno area, and I looked at the Reno master plan, and I have to say, I was delighted to see that, as it was adopted just months ago, it addresses every single concern that we have. I, for time's sake, I can't reference everything, but fire should be under six minutes and six minute 30 seconds, which in our area, it's much more than that. Police, traffic, schools, flooding, and one that has not been mentioned very much is wildlife. I grew up in Verdai, and the deer stayed in the mountains, and they came down and wintered around Verdai. Now, the deer don't know where to go. They're all over Verdai, the town of Verdai, because their habitat has been decimated by recent development. It's up to you to stick to the plan that's been made and adopted, and do the right thing, and minimize the impact on our community. The guiding principle of the plan was to promote responsible and well-managed growth, and I don't think there's a person that can drive out Old Highway 40 or I-80 and say that the growth that is happening there right now is well-managed. It is just another California-style, fit-as-many-stucco homes in an area that you can get. They're not affordable housing. They're $500,000 and up. I'm sure you're aware of the history of all of this. We're Washoe County residents, and basically, the property owners want a settlement, and I urge all of you to see the settlement that it has expired, but it is what the Development Standard Handbook was based on. And Judge Hardesty 11 times addresses assuring that the community is not overcongested with traffic, which if you add more schoolchildren, Bridge Street, downtown Verdai is going to be inundated with traffic. South Verdai Road can't handle the traffic. But most of all, it talks about that Garson overchange, and that this developer, if he brings it all to you at once, has to address that. Thank you for your time.
Erica White, followed by Pam McNeil.
Good evening again, Erica White, retired real estate broker, five generations. When, if you take a picture of Highway I-80, and you talk about Bel Air Ranch, and you talk about Blue Heron, you talk about any of these original developments, and then we are placing these new developments that we really don't have an understanding about. If, as the individuals before me talked about one way in and one way out, it's very true. We're playing a mousetrap, and people will die. I don't want that on my shoulder. I don't want that on my shoulder, and I don't want that to be on the shoulder of this community. Because I-80 will be shut down. All of the roads will be shut down. So we're already setting up our community for a major disaster. Perhaps your children, my children? What about the schools? What about coming back down to the importance of life and wildlife? What do we do with the community when everything is shut down? We're trapped. And I'm telling you here, on record, we are going to be in a serious situation, and so is the city of Reno. The Morton Garson handbook is still in play, and I want you to know that, yes, we're still in court on Meridian 1 and 2. And why does 3 and 4 come in? Let's stop the piecemealing. This is not a monopoly game. This is serious stuff. I don't know how many more times we have to address this, but the voices of this community will continue to go on. But please, pay attention to the fire, the emergency, and the schools, everything, because it's been noted, and been noted now on record. Thank you.
Pam McNeil, followed by Ken McNeil.
Hi, I'm Pam McNeil, and I know some of you know that I used to be on the Ward 5 NAB when they were reinstated. Neoma interviewed, and she asked what area of interest we had, and I replied Verdai. Verdai is similar to where I used to live. We lived in a county area that was under the sphere of influence of the city, and it's just a little different bag. And here, Verdai is dealing with being county, being in part of the city of Reno, and then even part of California. So it's just got different issues to deal with. When I became on, when I came on the NAB, the first thing I had to learn was the planning language, which is daunting. I've learned a little bit of it. I even went to a presentation the other night on zoning, which was very interesting, and learned a little bit more of it. Now incorporating this into this with the density, I was trying to grasp the handbook, the zone, the Morton Garson overlay district, and see how it all put together in that 300 houses. And this mini is allotted to Boomtown, this mini is allotted to Centerra, this mini is allotted to such-and-such a development, but it all comes down to, part of it, not all, but part of it comes down to, when a zoning map amendment was done in 2017. I remember being on the NAB, and Andy coming and making the presentation, and you'd rather see houses there than another hotel because you don't want another hotel. So great, that went through the process, and the zoning amendment was granted. And that was before I knew anything at all about Morton Garson and the 3,000, but it just kind of clicked in today that, that what was previously decided upon as 3,000 and whatever houses were in what pot, now that this was previously hotel and is now residential, that 500 houses or units that are on the various Meridian 120 South developments are coming out of somebody else's pot. And I just, they haven't increased the 3,000, but it's part of it, and somebody else doesn't have that. And that's kind of just what I came down to, bottom line, and in my sense of language, that's where it came from. That used to be, when it was all decided, it used to be not residential, it's now residential, and they've grasped that 500 from somewhere. So, thank you.
Ken McNeil, followed by Vernon Anderson.
Good evening, Ken McNeil. I am a resident of the city of Reno. I'm very concerned about one particular issue. That's the planned fire station. I understand that it looks like the developers are going to pay for the fire station, but who's going to pay for the manning and operation, day-to-day activities that have to take place at that fire station? If I'm not correct, maybe I can get corrected if I'm wrong, I believe Reno has two temporary fire stations. They can't build permanent fire stations because they don't have the money. I believe we have two fire stations that are undermanned. I believe that the Reno Fire Department just borrowed $6.5 million to buy new apparatus. So how in the world is Reno going to be able to staff and pay for that staffing at that fire station? The money has to come from somewhere. Do you want it to come from my pocket? Should other taxpayers have to pay? I was really disturbed when, not this development, but another development in the Morton Garson, I was talking to the developer, and I said, you know, I appreciate you willing to pay for the fire station, but who's going to pay for manning that fire station? He said, talk to the city. So I guess you're kind of the city, so I'm asking you, you are the planning commission, what is the plan for paying for manning that fire station? And in the meantime, before that fire station is built, Station 11 is going to have to respond to respond to that area. And if that's what's going to happen, then the level of service for me is going to decrease because that fire engine is going to be out of the area. So my level of service decreases as a result. There needs to be a plan, something we can all understand, makes sense, and does not impact existing homeowners and taxpayers. Thank you.
Vernon Anderson, followed by M.L. Belli.
Good evening. I'm Vernon Anderson. I've lived in Verdai for forty-two years. All of these people, my neighbors that have spoken, seems to me it's an open and shut case that this project is poorly planned and obvious to me that it would be rejected immediately. And I resist the temptation to think that the people who disagree with me and us are evil, because we've seen way too much of that and I'm going to try to avoid it. But it's a struggle. Mine is more of a general outrage. And in this case, it's because it's an outrageous project. The question I have is, which you're not going to answer, this boom and bust cycle that seems to go on in Reno, time after time, and we learn nothing. And we're at it again, but why does it fall to the little town of Verdai to fix it because people don't have places to live and they don't make any money? And your planners, seems like you could do a better job. And I always bring up, until everybody gets bored with the Pete Seeker song about little boxes on the hillside, and I forget that you've heard that before, and also Putin annexed Crimea, he stole it. And that's, the annexation and all that has gone with that is a dirty deal and it stinks and it never should have happened. And I guess I'm repeating myself, so I'll give somebody else a minute and a half. They're welcome to it. Thank you.
Next is M.L. Belli, followed by Tanya Denning.
I guess I'll have to say it as long as I've been around, I'm going to give you a history lesson. We'll start with the water. The water, I built the first house in Blue Heron subdivision over fifty years ago. I drilled two wells, one domestic well at two hundred feet, one irrigating well at two hundred feet. I've had since then to have to re-drill them both to five hundred feet and I've got half the volume that I used to have. What's caused a lot of that is the original four ranches that comprised Boomtown had surface water rights in the steamboat ditch and they've sold most of that in the Reno that's being used years ago. Then they go to the state engineer and ask for underground deals. Well, the least the state engineer ought to do is deduct what they've sold, if not, it's definitely double-dipping. And anyhow, everybody in the area is having trouble, I don't know. Now the water, instead of being pumped and put back in that area, but like Boomtown with their sewer deal, it's going to end up in the sewer line down to Sparks, out of our area. So that's part of the water deal. And then, of course, the density, but one and two is not on the agenda tonight. Belli Ranch and the Blue Heron are a hundred percent, again, we have petitions into the city on that. And of course, everybody has said, like, "Come out sometime and try..." Oh, another thing on the water, I forgot. We had a Artisan well on Warrior Lane. It's gone. It used to be one of the premier deals of that little ranch. In the wintertime, they had that water to feed their cattle. Had another spring by my house that's gone. It used to put out about four acre feet of water, an inch, which is equals four acre feet. And so anyhow, that's the water situation. Then, of course, if you guys come out, try the overpass, get onto the ramp, we've got the shortest approach to I eighty that there is. You better be hitting about seventy-five when you go to get on that, because you have just a short run to get on before you get to the bridge. And then you're in a tangled-up mess. So I mean, it's really bad, 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 the more I realize it, it's, it's really, really... And then, of course, we're not all, most all of the people in the Belli Ranch and the Blue Heron are city people. They have businesses and everything. We've probably got about a hundred million dollars' worth of properties, businesses, professional people. We've sent kids to college and everything and we spend a lot of money. And I've got more property in the city than I do in the county, too. But anyhow, the developer comes out and spends a few bucks and probably just a small fraction of what we're involved and what we're paying the city and county. Thank you.
Tanya Denning. Noted that she didn't actually both wishing and not wishing to make a statement, but in opposition. All right, I got a long list here. I'm going to go, I'm going to start with Bradley Moran. Bradley here. I think it looks like the whole family. Bradley, I'm going to read all their names. Bradley, Amy, Cage, Trey, and Blaze are all in opposition. Sophie Denning, also in opposition. Carly Borcard.
Orchard.
Orchard, sorry. I forgot my standard announcement about mispronunciations and apologies upfront. I would just appreciate everybody's handwriting so I can actually read your names tonight. That's a vast improvement. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. For the record, my name is Carly Borchard. I have lived in Verdai most of my life, over thirty years. And I have been fortunate enough to sit on both the Ward Five NAB and the Washoe County CAB for the past three years. And I've attended more planning and council meetings than I can possibly count. I believe in and I appreciate this review process. I feel very strongly that projects just like this are exactly why we have this process. When this developer appealed your denial of Phase One and Two to City Council, Council did remand it back to you for very good reasons. And they required it to be all-inclusive. Yet, as others have stated, here we are addressing just three and four and not all the phases. I think we would love to understand how that's being allowed. We do feel that this piecemeal approach is a waste of valuable time, efforts, and our city's resources. By looking at this project in separate phases, we are not able to appreciate the impact it has on the existing community. The staff report lists twenty conditions for approval. There are several issues that have either not been addressed or are not seen as an issue due to the piecemeal approach. I feel strongly that these issues can be addressed and mitigated, but only if we take a proactive approach. As an example, the Thirty-Nine Ventures rock-crushing facility off Coliseum Ranch Road was denied in part due to a lack of infrastructure on our small country roads. Yet a secondary access point is triggered by Phase Five and Six of this project that is planned to use those exact roads that have already proved inadequate. It's not being looked at in its entirety and all of the issues that are encompassed. I keep hearing, "We will deal with that later, down the road or when it becomes necessary." That is specifically why we have this review process, is to deal with those issues now. We do not have adequate services in the area and there's no means of public transportation. I can appreciate not everything is going to be in place and perfect for a development to come, but this is far, a far cry from it. We are growing way too big, way too fast, in an area that cannot handle it. We currently have two very large development projects underway, doubling our population. So we have hundreds of houses, brand-new houses for sale, lots to be built, that are available right now. So I keep hearing housing crisis. That is not our crisis. Our crisis is how fast we are being overgrown. Now is the ideal time to really utilize our city review process and get this right. While I appreciate water has finally been sufficiently addressed, we still have a number of concerns, as you've heard from my fellow neighbors tonight. The traffic and roadway infrastructure has to be addressed. Life safety services, schools, wildfire evacuation, and I appreciate hearing so many people bring up the wildlife. It's a big issue that everybody is just pushing to the wayside and it makes me sad. I hope that you'll consider all of these items. Thank you.
Casey Corbett, followed by Deanne Radcliffe.
My name's Casey Corbett. I live at two zero five Deer Mountain Road. I am in opposition to Meridian one twenty south, three and four. The City Council remanded the development back, or, let me say that again, the City Council remanded Reno Land Development back to the Planning Commission to bring all six developments at one time. Where are they not being held to this? I was looking over the tentative map application and Wood Rogers stated that there is two drainages that approach the site, but are both entirely intercepted by the steamboat ditch and neither contribute to the stead basin any longer. Now they go into the Truckee River Drainage Basin. In the Truckee Meadows Drainage Manual, it specifically states that you cannot trans-basin water. And it also states that the steamboat ditch is an irrigation ditch and not a drainage ditch. In a public meeting with Reno Land Development that we all sat down and met, the community and Neoma Jarden orchestrated it, we met with them three times and so there, they came up with this solution for the drainage with the steamboat. Because if you understand what happens with the steamboat, all these drainage basins go into the steamboat and they have no outlets. So then they come down and they overtop right in Meridian one and two, and then they come down through the county properties and flood them. So part of this, it says that, that the county needs to deal with the flooding issues. Well, that's annexed property into the city. So anyways, we went through these meetings and Reno Land Development, they told us that at every drainage, they were going to put a pipe underneath the steamboat. Well, clearly you can tell that that was baloney, because they wrote right in the application that they no longer had to worry about these two drainages, they were just going to go into the steamboat. So it's like, they want a continuance tonight so that we, they can meet with the public and get, you know, everything worked out. Well, why would we meet again when alls we hear is baloney? Anyways, thank you for your time.
Deanne Radcliffe, followed by Guy Borchard.
Sorry, I can't wait. Sorry, thank you very much, Michelle. Hello, I'm Deanne Radcliffe. Thank you so much for serving in this position as the Planning Commission. I am a resident of the Blue Heron subdivision. I'm going to address traffic. I have lived in Verdai over forty years and I guess I had the pleasure of participating in the Mortenson-Garson Development Standard Handbook back in the day it was created, so I had to bring it in for fun. Slide forward is on the right. Use the mouse. Excellent, thank you. Okay, sorry. Okay, let's talk about traffic. So in November of twenty seventeen, there was a long-awaited traffic study that looked at all of the Reno Land and Mortenson Holdings. I have to, and so there's the tentative findings for both the MAP and SUP, so G, D, and C, and again, that the effect of the proposed subdivision on existing streets and the need for new streets or highways to serve the subdivision. I am, my background is healthcare and if we use lab results from two years ago, you would be horrified, correct? And I think having a traffic study from two years ago when there's massive development that's happened is not appropriate, so... From that traffic study done by Paul Saleggi, he has some comments about Warrior Lane, I put it in the box there. And you can see it says that the assumed speed on Warrior Lane is twenty-five miles an hour. So I'm just taking a picture of Warrior Lane and the existing speed limit sign right next to it, because that's been there for far longer than the traffic study. Also noted on South Verdai Road, he notes that it is a, it has a solid yellow guideline in the middle. You can clearly see that the majority, that's South Verdai Road, probably ninety-eight percent of that road does not have a line down the middle of it. So those are a couple of things in the traffic study. As people have mentioned before me, the overpass was created in nineteen sixty-four, so that's fifty-five lovely years ago. And my question's, what's changed in fifty-five years? The overpass is now eligible for a senior discount. ADTs in Verdai has changed quite a bit. So those are some pictures of the bikers, who I know are supposed to use a different mechanism to get over the overpass. This is not uncommon. I have more photos, but I wanted to limit it to the slide. So, numbers were a huge issue in both this traffic study and the Meridian on three and four application from July. And the fact of the matter is they're not the same. Even though the same ITE manual was used, the numbers are different. So, and again, between the Meridian stuff on the other side of Boomtown Bates and the two eighty-five, we'd have five hundred and fifty-eight residential units and no road updates. I don't think that is really what is best. You see that we changed level of service here from C to D at those thresholds. And again, in that traffic study, they excluded current traffic. There was a community meeting in May of twenty sixteen, Reno and DOT and RTC were present. And here's, this is all off the Reno website today. Again, private funding, again, a Garson Road interchange. Again, they should be remanded as they can and come as one group rather than just piecemeal. More safety things. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Guy Borchard, followed by Jean Cardinella.
She didn't want to speak. Guy Borchard.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I missed that.
I wrote down.
They got to put, they got to put the boxes in different areas. Sometimes I miss them. So, also in opposition, Jean Cardinella, Cardella, excuse me. Threw an N in there that didn't exist.
My name is Jean Cardella. I live in Verdai. And in preparing for this meeting this evening, I came across this document in my files and it was dated October the fourth, two thousand seventeen, two years and one day ago. And I had originally titled this for the Planning Commission, Meridian one twenty south or one twenty Planning Commission. In reality, I believe I presented this information as number six, finding number six to the Reno City Council when we met with them. And in my presentation for tonight, I apologize for not getting this to you in time to read and look at. So I'm, I've gotten it to you now. I'm going to give you an opportunity to take it home and look at it. It basically addresses the issues that NDOT presented to Claudia Hansen in two thousand seventeen. And I extracted paragraphs from what NDOT had concerns and they're shown in black. And then below them, I have citizen concerns, where I comment on these issues. So I'd invite you to take a look at this and, and it will give you a context when we again meet. And I think that what you will find as you go through this is that none or very few of these issues have been addressed in a thoughtful way. Funding, for example, is just not addressed in water or in, in overpass. So it gives you an opportunity to look contextually back. And when we come before you at the next time, I'll put it in a, something that relates to this as well as other issues. So thank you very much for your time this evening.
And I have one more, not wishing to make a statement, from Giselle Abi Habib, also in opposition. Michelle, do we have any additional requests to speak for on this item?
No, I do not.
Anyone else wishing to make public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. I'm going to bring it back to the Commission. And as a reminder, we did not see a presentation on this. We received a request from the applicant for a continuance, time uncertain. So that is our purview to determine if we wish to consider that. Just before I do, I want to verify, Angela, is staff in support of the request for continuance?
Well, I will state on the record the official reason for the continuance, and I apologize for not saying this earlier. And the applicant has requested this continuance to work on a joint development solution with the adjacent property owner to the south. So at this time, it is up to the purview of the, and the discretion of the Planning Commission as to how you want to move forward.
Okay. Commissioners. Commissioners, we'd like to speak first. Commissioner Hawkins?
For the record, Commissioner Hawkins, I think we need to get bold here and make a determination other than a continuance and send this back to the city council since they want the whole project as a, like a PUD, not this piecemeal. I mean, if we're going to go that route, let's go with a denial and let the city council speak with the individuals and get a PUD on the table.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, additional comments? Commissioner Veltow?
Commissioner Veltow, for the record, I do think that a continuance would be fair. I'd like to at least give the applicant a chance to respond to a lot of the allegations and claims that are made, especially regarding whether or not there's a requirement that it be all-inclusive versus piecemeal. At least giving them an opportunity to address that would be fair before we just deny the project as a whole. I've heard what a lot of people are saying and it's stuff I'm definitely going to follow up with, especially regarding fire and infrastructure. But I think a continuance at this point is fair to the applicant.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Taylor?
Commissioner Taylor, Angela, did you say that staff was in support of a continuance?
It is up to the discretion of the Planning Commission. I will say that there are some things that we have had discussions with, clarification items. And I think a continuance would allow more time for those items to get worked out, but it's up to your discretion.
I'm inclined to support a continuance to work some of these items out.
Commissioner Levis?
Commissioner Levis. Well, the stated reason is to work with the property owners further to the south. And one of the biggest concerns I've heard tonight is for, to look at this with all the phases together, this seems even more comprehensive to allow the continuance, to allow that work to move forward, to work with even property owners that are not part of the specific project on better solutions. So I'd support it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Marshall, I'll throw it to you just so I make sure I cover everybody. No comments? Okay. Commissioner Hawkins, I appreciate what you're saying. I guess the concern that I have with that approach is that, you know, we are looking at a lot of issues and what I'm hearing is a lot of issues that deal with the fact that we're not seeing everything. I think part of our packet has the Mortons and Garson overlay, which has a lot of information in it. When I first look at it, it appears more like a tentative, or excuse me, more like a PUD where there's a lot of information in there, steps and phases and everything else. And to this point, we haven't seen that. And I don't think that's necessarily the fault of the developer. I think it's part of the fact that they, you know, this is a larger project of which apparently they don't have all of the control over. So in my mind, I think we are better off accepting the continuance on this project. And I think there's a pretty high expectation that whenever we see it again, we're going to see a lot more of it as more of an inclusive package, whether it's 1 through 6 or an even larger, including a separate property owner. So with that, I am willing to entertain a motion from council, or excuse me, from commission in terms of either accepting the continuance or not.
Commissioner Levis, I'll make a motion. In the matter, LDC 18-00087, I move to continue the presentation until I guess we're date uncertain.
Just check with Legal, is that a sufficient motion that works? Okay. I'm getting Greg nodding, so obviously it's Greg's night. It's Greg's night, so we'll make sure. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Taylor, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to accept the continuance. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
You're not, it's not discussion from you. Sorry, it's just from the commission. So Commissioner Hawkins?
My concern is, does this property owner to the south have anything to do with our meeting tonight? And if it doesn't, then I think we need to go forward with a denial.
I think you have to answer that question for yourself, Commissioner Hawkins. Any further discussion from the commission? All those in favor of the continuance? Aye. Opposed? Nay. I have four votes for. That would be Commissioner Levis, Commissioner Taylor, Commissioner Johnson, and Commissioner Veltow. Two votes against Commissioner Hawkins and Commissioner Marshall. So motion continuance carries. Angela, would you like to speak to what the process would be from here on moving forward?
So moving forward, because this is not a date certain, when the applicant is ready to move forward, we will be noticing this again. The public notice signs that are posted on the site will also be put up again with a new date. And then the postcards that hopefully you all had received in the mail, you will receive again when the new meeting has been agendized.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is item 6.2, case number LDC 20-00008, the Tamwa equalization tanks. We will start with a presentation from the applicant.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, would you like to wait until the room clears out?
Stacy, give us a moment. I'd ask everyone, we have more items on our agenda, so if you have continuing conversations, if you can, please take them out into the hall so we can continue. Thank you very much. All right, Stacy.
Good evening. Stacy Huggins, for the record, with Wood Rogers. Thank you. I'm here tonight to seek special use permit for the Tamwa equalization tanks. Scroll? Yeah, okay. This property or this project is located on three parcels that are on the south side of 395. You can see on this map on the overhead, the parcel in yellow is owned by the U.S. Forest Service. It's approximately 1,400 acres in size total. The line, the little blue line here, and then on the zoning map to the right represents the actual, I'll call it the project itself. It's the access road and the two tanks. As you can see, again, on the map to the right, the parcels, the parcel of the project is zoned open space and the projects immediately surrounding the parcel are zoned open space. I will show in just a minute, we do have some adjacency, different zoning for the adjacent parcels, general rule in Washoe County and high-density rule in Washoe County as well. Again, so we're here seeking approval for really two special use permits and one that has been elevated. Utility installation, so the tanks themselves are actually typically approved through a site plan review. But since this project had to come forward under a special use permit for grading in open space zoning and also non-residential development adjacent to residentially zoned property, the utility tanks were actually elevated to the special use permit level. And so this is a photo looking at the site from 395. I just wanted to have something to show you what it looks like today. The tanks will be located up in this general area. And I'll have a picture of that for you in a minute. So talking about the first part of the special use permit request, again, the tanks associated with this request, there will be two of them. They will be on a graded pad that's 215 by 120 feet in size. There are the two tanks. They're each 26 feet in height, 50 feet in diameter. Each of them will hold 300,000 gallons of water. Both of the tanks will be a non-reflective neutral tan to blend with the environment so they are not obvious from the road. Each of the tanks or the tanks themselves will have, there'll be a block building behind them that will house mechanical and any other equipment that needs, is necessary for the tanks to operate. It's very standard with water tanks. The project itself will be enclosed with a six-foot-tall chain-link fence that's topped with barbed wire to secure these facilities. And the tanks will be owned and operated by Tamwa. Right now, there is an existing dirt road that accesses to this parcel. You can see the grading plan there on the right. As a part of this project, the existing dirt road that accesses the red metal trailhead is currently 18 feet wide. It will be widened and improved to 20 feet wide. It will start off coming up from North Virginia where it will be gravel or ag base where it crosses the railroad tracks. And then once it crosses the railroad track, the road will be paved from the tracks up to the water tank site. That road will be maintained by Tamwa. As part of doing the improvements for the access road to the tanks, there will be some new signage associated with this trailhead and also a future parking area. And then also as a part of this project, as a part of the grading, the project is providing a two-to-one volume offset mitigation, which is above the recently approved volume mitigation for this area, which was the 1.3 to 1. So this is mitigating above and beyond. Real quick, so the second special use permit was grading in properties zoned open space. I want to just point out that to do the grading that you see on this plan, that's the road and the grading associated with the tanks, we're disturbing approximately two acres of the 1,400 acres. That's 86,000 square feet and it's a relatively small impact from a grading perspective. We are max fill of 3.4 feet and a max cut of eight and a half feet. Neither of those numbers meets the threshold for additional special use permit findings. I want to touch on the residential adjacency special use permit. I mentioned earlier that there are some properties adjacent to the open space property that are zoned for residential, high-density rule in Washoe County. The code does say anything adjacent from a zoning perspective has to look at residential adjacency requirements. I want to just point out that the nearest residentially zoned parcel is approximately a mile from this site and separated by the railroad tracks. So really, these tanks and the road accessing them will not have a negative impact on these, on that adjacent zoned property. Also, with the topography, that, any development on that adjacent residentially zoned property will not be visible. And so the next picture I show you, you'll see where those, kind of where the tank sits. So this is, you can see in the picture, a photo sim of the site. The tank is, one of the tanks is sitting there. You do not see the road. You will not see the second tank. You will not see the building behind it. So there is not a negative impact on that residentially zoned parcel a mile away. So in closing, the tanks are a necessary element for the properties that have been annexed into the city of Reno over the last 10 years. They will provide additional water infrastructure to serve all of the North Valleys. And the road and the other improvements really make the Forest Service area and the open space in this area more accessible for the public and actually safer for people that are accessing that trailhead. With that, Mr. Chair, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Stacy. We'll get a presentation from staff and call you back. Brooke, good evening.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner, for the record. As was discussed by the applicant's representative, they're in for three SUPs, one being the elevated SPR, that is the grading in the open space, utility in an open space, and the residential adjacency. Staff has received approximately four phone calls on this within the last couple of days just requesting additional information. I anticipate that those requests were from people who had been noticed. There are very large parcels out there and a lot of different interests in that. Several of those parcels that did call are, were actually north of 395. We're told them that they were not directly impacted by this. Many felt that maybe it was going through their property or not. And I cleared up those misunderstandings on that. Once again, this is a large parcel, over 1,000 acres. That residential does kick in because of the residential adjacency down in the county area here. We do have another residence here that is actually zoned open space. Staff did analyze that, just to look at that adjacency there. That property is directly adjacent to the railroad right-of-way. And then there's a significant grade change in between there. Staff, you know, as we looked at this, the grading of that road, and we actually see that to be to the advantage of that adjacent property owner. That would, we would anticipate that that would limit dust and noise created from that dirt road and the access of that dirt road. As was stated by the applicant, the parcel, the actual project site is much smaller than 1,000 acres. And we really looked at the minimized impact of that. The federal government, through talking with the applicant, they highly suggested that any minimization of that grading. And we've seen that done by using the existing dirt road. We do have some grades on that road that are rather steep. And we, and our engineering staff has felt comfortable with that because it has minimized that overall grading if we had to get the road through with some, with some less steep grades in that area. Additionally, we're seeing up where the tanks are located are a fairly flat area. We do have a couple of conditions that have been put on there. These are over and above our grading standards in Title 18, which would provide native seed cover, potential irrigation for reseeding and re-establishment of the seeding in that area. We have additional conditions of the riprap and any stabilization will have to be the color blending in with the natural environment there. We have put in a noxious weed monitoring program to make sure that we are not spreading or encouraging any sort of noxious weeds that will be in perpetuity of the project site. They'll have to maintain that plan and instigate that plan to reduce any spread of noxious weeds. The tanks will be painted per the surrounding area. There are a couple of additional conditions. We have a condition that the fence will actually be a vinyl-coated fence in a similar color to the tanks. That should reduce any glare and will also provide longevity of that fence. Secondly, the CMU block ball will be a decorative CMU and will also be in an earth tone or complementary color to the surroundings. So with the information provided in the application with the recommended conditions of approval, staff can make all applicable findings and recommends approval of the project. I'm available for questions as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Before I open up for public comment, I will ask commissioners for disclosures. I'll start with Commissioner Hawkins.
Mr. Hawkins, for the record, visited the site, talked with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Veltow, for the record, no disclosures.
Commissioner Johnson, I corresponded with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Taylor asked, did I?
Commissioner Marshall, no disclosures.
Commissioner Levis, no disclosures.
Thank you, commissioners. I have one request to speak for on this item from Michael J. DiMartini.
Good evening, commissioners. Michael J. DiMartini, I've been doing civil engineering in Cold Springs Valley for almost 49 years. I own property out there for almost 40 years. I am a voting commissioner on the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission. And I've been on the, that commission and the Regional Water Planning Commission for almost 25 years and am currently today. I'm not here speaking on behalf of that commission. And I'm not here to speak regarding the minutia of the tanks proposed. However, I would like to, regarding the current comprehensive regional water management plan that was approved in 2017, I have copies of the page. plan that was approved in 2017, I have copies of the page. When we culminated our review process on the regional water management plan in 2017, and again, not speaking on behalf of the commission, but just as a person that was there hearing what went on, it was brought up at that meeting that the importation of water into Cold Springs from Lemon Valley and Fish Springs, the effect of that had not yet been evaluated by the And there was a consensus reached, and this particular page of the current approved plan was modified to be like it is today in the way it was approved, which is showing, the way the situation was handled, it was indicated that it wasn't determined yet as to whether there was any additional water necessary for Cold Springs to be brought in from Lemon Valley, and therefore, a note was put on this sheet acknowledging that. Now, the reason this is relevant to this tank, which I should have said in the beginning, is that this is an equalizing tank, as I understand it, to be put on and be part of and related to that importation pipe that is currently not in the approval of the comprehensive regional water management plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Do we have any additional request to speak forms on this item?
No, we do not.
Okay. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions or comments. Who'd like to get us started? Commissioner Marshall.
Brooke, could you respond to Mr. DiMartini's comment?
Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner for the Record. There is a representative from TMA present, and I believe they would be able to more thoroughly answer that for you.
Thank you. Good day to that.
Good evening. My name's John Enlow. I'm the Director of Natural Resources for Truckee Meadows Water Authority. I believe the provision that Mr. DiMartini is speaking of, the facilities referenced in the regional water management plan, I believe there's a policy in the plan that basically excludes normal facilities for the delivery of service to different subdivisions. And this project, these equalization tanks, fit under that definition of kind of typical facilities required for service. The regional water management plan, I also am on the Regional Water Planning Commission, the Northern, excuse me, the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission. It's geared more towards large regional infrastructure projects, not small tanks or pipelines or pump stations. So, I believe Mr. DiMartini is not correct in his statement that this project falls under that requirement.
Thank you. Could you address why, what's the purpose of these tanks?
Right. So, there is a new pipeline that will be constructed to serve the Cold Springs area within TMA's service territory, and because of the topography in this area, these are small tanks required to minimize literally pressure swings within the pipeline when you turn pumps on and off. So, they're actually required to be at a very specific elevation. That's why there's the roadway going up the hill. We had to site those tanks at a very precise elevation to meet the hydraulic requirements in the pipeline.
So, this is, are these tanks solely to facilitate TMA water delivery to Cold Springs Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I have to recuse myself. I've recused myself from the, now I'm blanking on the name of the big development that...
Stone Gate?
Stone Gate. Stonehedge, sorry. And so, yeah, because this is to facilitate that, I'm going to recuse myself also from this item.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Marshall. We'll flag you down when this one is over. Okay, well, my line of questioning just came to an end from Commissioner Marshall. Who else has some questions on the item? Mr. Hawkins? Any further discussion? Commissioner Hawkins, four is yours.
In the case of LDC 20-00008, TMA equalization tanks, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permits, subject to the following conditions, and I can make all the findings.
Thank you, Commissioner. Have a motion? Looking for a second.
Commissioner Taylor, second.
I think you have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to item 6.3, case number LDC 20-00010, the Golden Valley Commercial Zoning Map Amendment. We'll pause for a moment for Commissioner Marshall to find his way back up, and then we will have a presentation from the applicant or applicant's representative. Derek, he'll make it when he makes it. We've got a quorum, so we're good.
Okay, great. Derek Wilson with Rubicon Design Group on behalf of the applicant.
We hardly had time to miss you, John. All right. Sorry, Derek. Please continue.
Great, thank you. This is a request for a zone change on a small piece of property that is adjacent to the freeway with, well, eventually as part of larger project, will have access to Golden Valley Road. I think people are probably familiar with the site, but it's near the shopping center and the post office off of North Hills Boulevard in Golden Valley. So, this request is for a small piece of property. It's kind of a lost little residential bit, 1.8 acres of single-family, fifteen-thousand-square lots surrounded by AC zoning. The goal is to position the property for commercial development similar to what's in the area already. A special use permit or a site plan review is likely to follow this, not guaranteed. If the AC zoning were granted, there's a fairly generous list of uses, so not automatic would be back, but it is possible. Standing on the site, looking to the southeast, you can see that's the freeway border. The other direction is a, that's looking east towards industrial building, and then behind the photographer is commercial development, retail primarily. So, that's the site, the yellow blob in the middle of the AC. Frankly, it's a little difficult for me to explain how this piece avoided a zone change over the intervening years. It's very much an unappealing residential site. It's a bit of lost zoning, I'm guessing from prior to the freeway being built. I'm guessing this area had expansive residential zoning, and this is a last little remnant that somehow never got changed. So, I view this primarily as a cleanup. That's the proposed zoning to make it match what's surrounding it. And then additionally, the current SF zoning is not supported by the master plan. So, this request to change would bring the site into conformance with the master plan. And then, if people are interested, this is a proposed site layout in the after condition with the zone change. We're in touch with NDOT about access from Golden Valley Road. The owner is in touch, the applicant is in touch with prospective users, including quality restaurants, which I know is a goal of the Golden Valley area. So, I think it's an extremely logical project, and I think that about covers it. I'll be happy to talk more if needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Presentation from staff. Anne Marie, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Anne Marie Lane, Assistant Planner for the Record. Thank you. As stated by the applicant, this is a request for 1.8 acres of single-family residential to arterial commercial. It should be noted that the current zoning is an isolated residential zoning district surrounded by the arterial commercial zoning district on three sides. This was heard at the Ward 4 NAB meeting on September 19th. Staff received one comment in favor that was forwarded to the Commissioners. The anticipated public hearing date for City Council will be November 16th. Anticipated ordinance of adoption, if it's recommended for approval, would be December 4th. This is a reminder that finding statements for zoning map amendments are tailored to the entire range of uses allowed within a requested zoning district and not on a proposed specific development. With that, staff was able to make all of the required findings A through O and recommends approval. Staff is available for questions if the planning commission has any. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Before I open up the comment, I'll ask for disclosures, starting with Commissioner Levis.
Commissioner Levis, no disclosures.
Commissioner Marshall, no disclosures.
Commissioner Taylor, no disclosures.
Commissioner Johnson, no disclosures.
Commissioner Veltel, no disclosures.
Mr. Hawkins, talked with the representative, went by the site.
Thank you. Michelle, do we have any request to speak forms on this item?
No, we do not.
Anyone wishing to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for questions, comments. Commissioner Hawkins?
No, I'm just anxious to get it going.
Commissioners, any questions before Commissioner Hawkins jumps across the counter at me? All right, Commissioner Hawkins, back to you.
Mr. Hawkins would like to make a motion to approve this. In the case of LDC 20-00010, Golden Valley Commercial Zoning Map Amendment, based upon the compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend the City Council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance, and I can make all the findings.
Mr. Marshall, second.
I have a motion and a second for the discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Motion, the nay, motion carries unanimously? Nope. I said, I asked if there was any nays, and there was none, so motion carries unanimously. Okay. Next is case number LDC 20-00012, WellQuest of Northwest Reno, Zoning Map Amendment. We will start with a presentation from the applicant's representative.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's John Munson with Venture Engineering, and we're also here for a zoning map amendment. This one is in Grand Point Way and Mayan Avenue. Currently, the site is 5.1 acres, zone PO. We're asking to change the zoning to neighborhood commercial. It's in, has a master plan designation of SMU. The site here on Mayan, Grand Point Way right here, the freeway over here coming up to Mayan, and then Rob Drive right to the left. We do have residential properties across Mayan, Sound Barrier Wall right here, and we have some residential properties here along the right-hand side, post office, and then McCarran Crossing, commercial development. It's a little closer up view, I shouldn't have went there. Post office again, commercial development, commercial development, some residential homes. The existing master plan is suburban mixed use, is the same as all the commercial-y-zone properties over here. Thing about SMU, it does allow for high-intensity commercial uses, arterial commercial zoning, high-intensity residential use, MF-30. We're glad that we have the NC that fits within there. NC and PO are very similar, but the proposed use on this property would be congregate care, assisted living, and that's not allowed in PO, but it is allowed in NC. We would not want to be here asking for AC or MF-30, which would not be appropriate for the property. The existing zoning, PO, this is a PUD, but it's really NC, very similar. This may be a little higher intensity than this zoning over here, the uses in this PUD, but for all intents and purposes, it's NC. If the zoning is approved, we would be NC, the same as this. Again, same as the master plan, all these properties would be come together, similar zoning. The thing about the residential adjacency, no matter what commercial use might be proposed, it's an automatic special use permit due to these homes here and the ones across Mayan. So, special use permit, no matter what, whether it's PO, the way it is now, or NC, it would still require a special use permit. NC does allow for more variety of commercial uses and residential uses over PO. PO is very limited. Could be a lot of the reason the parcel is still vacant after all these years. As you can see from previous photos, it's like an island of, surrounded by development. So, infill, rezone, I guess that's it. Let's keep going. I'm going to go to a different slide here. So, now I'm stuck. Ah, very good. Thank you. So, we'll come back to this slide. So, really, the only other undeveloped property nearby is on the other side of the post office, that zone multifamily. It's a couple over here, one vacant pad in the PUD. So, you know, it's time to develop this property, and the proposed, the proposed use would be the assisted living, congregate care facility, which in terms of the zoning, just to back up a little bit, the things that would be preserved in the zone change between PO and NC would be the height limit, two-story buildings, so we wouldn't be able to build any taller of a building, 20% landscaping, so the landscaping requirement is preserved, the residential adjacency standards, 10-foot minimum landscape setback is required here no matter what. So, the basic elements of development are preserved in the zone change. It allows further flexibility. If the project didn't go forward as assisted living, we feel NC is appropriate for the property, just as these uses, these uses and further down, you've got higher intensity commercial. So, the underlying zoning is appropriate for the property, and that's the most important That, I think that really concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, John. We'll let staff do a presentation and let you know if we have any questions. Nathan, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners for the record. Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. I will be brief. Staff concurs with the applicant's presentation, John covered the basis of the request. The distinction between PO and NC is quite minimal. PO is slightly less intense, but it does allow for a variety of commercial office and slightly intense uses. The NC expands that somewhat. As John mentioned, any non-residential development on the location would require a special use permit for residential adjacency, as well as most residential uses that would be allowed either a special use permit or a tentative map. The congregate care facility would only trigger that special use permit review if it was over 100 units included in that. If that use is proposed there, conceivably, it could just go straight to permit, would have to meet all residential adjacency base code standard requirements. As John mentioned, that includes a six-foot solid wall, 10-foot landscape setback, three-to-one height setback ratio, all of the standard code provisions for residential compatibility. Staff can make the applicable findings. It was presented to the NAB. We didn't receive any comments one way or the other. They were generally supportive of it. Staff can make the findings and recommends approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Again, public hearing, so, but before I open that up, I'll ask for disclosures. Start with Commissioner Hawkins.
Commissioner Hawkins, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Veltel, no disclosures.
Commissioner Johnson, no disclosures.
Commissioner Taylor, no disclosures.
Commissioner Marshall, no disclosures.
Commissioner Levis, no disclosures.
Thank you, Commissioners. Michelle, do we have any request to speak forms on this item?
No, we do not.
Anyone wishing to make public comment on this item? Okay, I'll close it and bring it back to the commission for any questions, comments, Commissioner Marshall.
Ready to make a motion if you'll accept one.
Mr. Hawkins?
I just have one question for the applicant.
Hold that thought.
There was an indication that you have a, the north side of this property's got a sound barrier wall. I've been past there. Are you good with coming along later on and putting that same type of sound barrier wall on the east side of your property?
I think because this property's zoned NC and that's single-family, we would have to have that solid wall on the east side.
Okay, thank you.
Otherwise, if it was a zone residential, it would be offense. Thank you.
Additional questions? Commissioner Marshall.
In the matter of LDC 20-00012, based upon the compliance with applicable findings, I move to recommend that city council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance.
Thank you. Commissioner Olivas.
Commissioner Olivas, I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second for the discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up is item 6.5, case number LDC 20-00014, State Street Multifamily. Start with a presentation from the applicant or applicant's representative.
Mr. Chairman, commission, good evening. For the record, Garrett Gordon. Tonight with me is Ryan Gold from Elmwood Properties, who is the applicant.
Garrett, use the roller. On the mouse. Use the roller, ball on the mouse.
Oh, there we go. Okay, thank you. Here's a keyboard here for counsel.
We don't read a keyboard.
So, subject site tonight, 301 State Street. Located on State Street to the south, to the north is Mill Street. This is a city parcel, parking lot. To the east is good old Bertha Miranda's, a Mexican restaurant we all know and love. I was approached by this particular developer, gosh, over a year and a half ago, and said, this is a city parcel, we're in a housing crunch, it'd be a perfect parcel for some infill development, to bring some multifamily to downtown, and what are the chances of us being able to purchase it from the city? So we approached the, approached staff and city council, and were able to negotiate through the efforts of the short timer over here, Greg Salter, a disposition and development agreement for economic development. So right now, we're under contract with the city of Reno to purchase this property. Part of that negotiation was, of course, the city is going to sell Elmwood Properties the parcel, but in exchange, city council said, we'd like some workforce housing. If we're going to sell you this parcel with some market rate units, it's important to the city, to the master plan, to include some workforce housing. So we negotiated 10% of 64 units of the project would in fact be workforce housing, and you can see in our development agreement, we have actually the amount the folks would make each year, and also a capped rent each year to make sure, and it was a deed restriction, so it would run in perpetuity, and we'd have some nice workforce units. Part of our due diligence period was, in order to make this project work, city council, we need to come forward with a special use permit to raise the height of the building. In order to get 64 units, in order to get 10% of those units being workforce housing, we'd need to raise the height of the building. So when our due diligence period right now, we applied for a special use permit, so I'm here before you tonight, asking for a height increase from 45 feet up to 65 feet. Here's a rendering of the proposed multifamily building. You can see there's five levels. First level is ground level parking. As you know, in the California district, no parking is required. However, the first floor will accommodate 23 parking spaces plus 288 spaces. Levels two through four will include 64 residential units, 48 studios and 16 one-bedrooms, and of course, 10% of those units will be workforce housing. Here's a floor plan, you can see the ground level, parking lot, there's an entrance off of Mill Street, and also off of River Rock. As you can see, levels two, three, four, five, here are the floor plans in order to accommodate the 64 units. Here's some perspectives from each corner of the proposed building. You can see they focused on design, focused on balconies, focused on really what I think is a nice fitting project in this particular area. And here's some civic use permit requests. So you can see on the left-hand side of this slide, the highest floor, if you go levels one through four, is about 43 feet. The max height that we're currently allowed is 45, so it would cut off the ability to have that extra floor with the extra units, again, to accommodate both workforce and market rate. So the request tonight is to go from 45 feet up to 65 feet to accommodate this building. Of course, it's certainly applicable of, let's look at the surrounding area. Does this fit into the character of their surrounding buildings and properties that have similar heights? And we would argue tonight, the answer is yes. If we go up to 65 feet, you can see, starting on the left side of the slide, the Renaissance is 120. On the same block, 75 feet tall is that Lake Mill Lodge, which is on the corner, kitty corner from the Renaissance, has the liquor store in the, on the ground floor. Next to that, that particular building is a 67-foot building as well, and then behind it, that housing project is 53 feet. So we would argue it does kind of fit into the character, and again, if you look at the master plan policies that were set forth, which I think Brooklyn did a great job with, city council, planning commission, and reimagine Reno, the focus is on infill, the focus is on housing, so we think this is compatible with the area and provides a much-needed housing project to this area. So shadowing, anytime I've been before this body, a few times with height increases, and of course, the shadowing is always important. So tonight, we have a shadow study, both showing the date of the winter solstice, when the sun, of course, is the lowest, and also, the next slide will be summer solstice, when the sun is the highest. So you can see the three slides on the top is what we're proposing, 65 feet. The three slides on the bottom is the proposed, is the allowed 45 feet. So I would argue, as you kind of go through each comparison, that it is not significant. It is, it clips a little bit of, you can see on the middle slides, the residential properties to the east, that residential property right on Mill Street, it is, it would currently be shadowed a bit with regards to 45 feet, and again, the 65 feet, I would argue, just a little bit more shadowing, and it certainly is not, in my mind and my client's mind, you know, significant enough to cause any material injury to that particular property. And again, we took a look at June, and yeah, I think you can see as far as the shadowing, the second and third slides, very, very similar, the slides on the left-hand side with regards to proposed and allowed, again, very minimal impact in our mind, and we think 65 feet would in fact be appropriate. So that's my presentation. Mr. Chairman, happy to answer any questions, and just want to thank again Greg Salter for his efforts on the development agreement, and Brooklyn with his efforts with this application. We do have six or seven conditions of approval. We agree with those and agree with staff's recommendation for approval as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. Brooke, welcome back.
Thank you. Brooke Oswald, associate planner for the record. The applicant initially, we had scheduled for a, the NAB scheduled for September 10th. The applicant was not able to make that specific NAB meeting. We did reschedule for the October 1st meeting, which would have been Monday. That meeting was canceled for lack of a quorum, so this has not been before a NAB. The NAB representative did let me know that all their members were made aware that they could comment on any, on this project, provide comments. At this point, we haven't received any comments. I have not received any comments related to any of the noticing, any emails, or any phone calls at this time. I just want to clarify the statement that was made about the parking. In the California area district, what happens is our standard parking ratio, rate for the use becomes, instead of being the minimum that's required, it becomes the maximum, and then under that, the, it is at the applicant's discretion to how much parking they want to have. So they can go to zero, or they can provide something in between, and this, they have provided 25 spaces. There is additional street parking in the, in the related area to this, to this project. Additionally, this is an area that is in close proximity to many recreational facilities, downtown area, and specifically to a transit and the transit hub, which is in close proximity to this area. There are a couple additional conditions. We did limit the patios to not be allowed on the second and third floor on the east side of the building. This is to reduce that privacy issue with some existing structure, or existing households that are to the east. We also required a solid wall between, a six-foot solid wall between this parcel and those parcels to the east. In the, the application, the parking is on the bottom, this, this wall should act to reduce that noise and reduce any light glare associated with, with that parking. As proposed and with the recommended conditions, staff can make all of the applicable findings and recommends approval of this project. I am available for questions as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. I do have some request to speak forms on this item, but before I open it up for public comment, I will again ask for disclosures. I'll start with Commissioner Olivas.
Commissioner Olivas, no disclosures.
Commissioner Marshall, some conversations with the, or should I say, communications with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Taylor, I'm familiar with the site and correspondence with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Johnson corresponded with the applicant's representative and visited the site.
Commissioner Velto, no disclosures.
Mr. Hawkins visited the site and chatted with the applicant's representative.
Thank you, commissioners. I do have some request to speak forms on this item. I will start with Trey Bensley.
My name is Trey Bensley. I live at 318 State Street.
Pull the mic, you can pull the mic from over to you.
All right, 318 State Street. My name is Trey Bensley. I live in Holcomb Place Townhomes, just adjacent to the property. I've been in Reno for 22 years. I own a business on Pueblo. As I am, you know, just, I mean, I think gentrification and improvement in our area is absolutely necessary. I've been through many planning, things going on in our, in our community for a long time, and it's always parking that is the biggest issue. What we went through in Midtown to get the Virginia corridor moving so that we had some parking was a long, long process. Downtown, in the corridor, parking, it's always parking. We have a 16-unit townhome area. I know that every person there has at least two cars. There's always cars parked on that, on that street and, and surrounding. Every time there is a downtown event, whether it be the Aces Ballgame, people are parking on all of those streets, River Rock, State, Mill, they're full of parking. The parking lot existing there, where they're planning on putting this apartment building, there's always parking, people parked in that lot overnight every day. It's overthrow, it's overflow for Bertha Miranda's, the distillery, and the fitness and office building there on Holcomb and Mill as well. I have a front balcony on my unit, and I get to see the, the Aces fireworks and the downtown fireworks, and when the 65-foot building goes in, all of my view goes away. So I think that's going to be a problem. 23 spaces for 64 units, that's a, you know, probably 120 vehicles added there, and then the new project going in that's already been approved and building on Mill and High Street, that's 53 units, that's another 106 vehicles, trying to fit into this small area. I think if we're only looking at 6%, or 10%, that's six units out of 64 for workforce housing. I don't know if this really, if it really adds up to what we need in that area. So anyway, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Next is Angelo Doutsis, sorry for the pronunciation. Angelo's not here, is in opposition to the project, and Jay Ball.
I live at 128 River Rock Street, right across the street from the new apartment complex going up, which is fine. I have no problem with apartment complex, it's growth, but the problem I have is, I can't find a parking spot sometimes. If there's a baseball game, if I'm gone, if I haven't found a parking spot before the game starts, I'm done for three or four hours. That's the way it is in our neighborhood, and that's including the parking lot. It's full during baseball games, and I've had to go sit in a restaurant for two hours or go visit friends for two or three hours if I didn't get home in time. It's, it's a pain in the butt, obviously, and this form said that there's 12 available parking spots on the street. Well, that's 12 spots perhaps, but they're all used every day. They're always used, and, you know, so it's not, they're not available to the people in apartment complex, and how can you have only 23 parking spots for 64 units? That's my big issue, and that's about all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Michelle, do we have any additional request to speak forms on this item?
No, we do not.
Anyone else wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, I will close it and bring it back to the commission for questions. Would like to get us started. Commissioner Velto? Oh, you leaned forward. Everybody else was leaning back.
Commissioner Velto, for the record, questions for the applicant. Do you have any response just to the parking concerns that are voiced?
Sure, thank you for the question. So we did commission a parking study as part of our due diligence and part of our SEP packet, and this was conducted by Lauren Shilson, certified traffic engineer. So you can see, he concludes that the proposed project consists of 64 multifamily units, anticipated to have parking demand of 71 spaces per city code and 84 spaces per the general manual. The project will provide 25 spaces onsite, but he does note that onsite parking requirement is actually zero in the California Avenue District. So our requirement is zero, we're not obligated to provide parking, but, which we, which we are. But furthermore, he says, within a one-block radius of the parking site, the parking supply onsite plus on-street is 79 spaces, which exceeds the typical parking supply required per city of Reno code. So not only do we believe, based on his study, that there's significant off-site parking for the full demand, we're providing 25 spaces. And he goes on to say, being extra diligent, if you look at the two-block radius, 124 spaces available during peak parking demand hours. So we're not required to provide parking, but we are providing 26 spaces, but then we also believe there's sufficient off-site, a block and two blocks away.
Mr. Taylor? Oh, sorry. Did you have a follow-up question, Marshall?
Yes. Okay. Did he address in the, in the study, the loss of the parking lot? So you're not only adding residents, but you're losing onsite, the parking that the, that the, is provided now by the lot?
For the record, Garrett Gordon, so the park, the city parcel is currently a parking lot.
Yeah.
He did not. He went ahead and calculated all the parking spaces on the block one and then block two.
I guess I was asking a little different question, which is, you're displacing the cars that would have been parked in that lot into the neighborhood. Is he looking at any sort of, you know, the capacity of the neighbor to absorb not only the parking, additional cars generated by the apartment building, but also the loss of the parking provided by the- but also the loss of the parking provided, uh, by the current lot?
And my, for the record, Garrett Gordon, thanks, Commissioner Marshall, for the que, for the question. My understanding is he did not include the displacement, but regarding, you know, the, the use of that lot, um, if it's full with, you know, Aces patrons, uh, Aces patrons will find, you know, other places to park, as will Bertha's patrons. But we specifically focused on the ability for our tenants where they would park and the ability for them to park, given the fact that, and this is probably why he didn't look at that displacement, is no parking, you know, is in fact required, but we are providing, you know, 24 spaces.
Can I just probe on that just for a second?
Sure.
No parking provided onsite, uh, but is there any obligation, uh, to, for the, either in our consideration or provided by the developer to ensure that there's capacity? Not that there is spaces available, but there is actually some sort of absorptive capacity for the project's parking ons, on the street?
For the record, Garrett Gordon, my understanding, as far as your legal findings for this special use permit, no. That would not be a consideration to base, say, a denial or lack of finding, um, uh, lack of support for particular finding based on parking or the absorption you're talking about, given it's, it's not required and we're going above and beyond and providing some.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Garrett. I have just, um, a follow-up question on the public comment. Um, Mr. Bensley, I'm sorry if I butchered that. Are you familiar with the location of where he's at?
I believe I can get you a better map.
Garrett, do you want your presentation back up?
Was that the first gentleman who spoke in the townhomes?
Correct.
Yes. So my understanding, he would be in one of these units. I don't know if he's nodding his head, but that would be my understanding.
Okay. So at 45 feet, which is what you're allowed to do, correct?
Yep.
Would his view be blocked? Based on what he said?
Uh, for, for the record, clearly, if there was a 45-foot structure in front of his 35-foot structure, I believe his northerly view would already be blocked. But to the extent going up 20 feet, what that significant is, significance is, um, I, I don't, I don't know. But I think the fact that we can already go up 45 feet and going up 65 feet, it would be impeded, but to the extent of that, uh, the scope of that, I don't, I don't, we haven't, we didn't study that particular piece.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there additional questions? Commissioner Valto?
Uh, Mr. Gordon, uh, just a question off of, uh, Commissioner Marshall's question. Is there any ordinance that prevents you from displacing parking spots? Is there anything that requires you to, that prevents you from doing that?
Uh, thank you for the question, Commissioner. Uh, no, that was not a consideration regarding a finding of the special use permit. And also, I should note, we went through extensive hearings at City Council in order to, go under contract for the purchase of this property, and there was discussions about what the property had been used for. Um, but there was never a concern about the displacement of these particular spots in regards to the downtown area as a whole. Thank you.
Garrett, while you're up here, um, one of the comments that we received from, uh, Police Department was a, a comment on the, the stair towers in the corners and looking at, uh, desire for more open visibility. Um, it looks like, based on the floor plan, you've got, uh, those stairs wrap around with, what, two intermediate landings in addition to the, the main landing? I'm, I guess I'm wondering if there's a way, uh, in looking at this, those stair towers do look pretty limited in terms of, uh, the windows that are there. Um, I'm wondering if there was discussion or review of the request from the Police Department to open those up a little bit more from a safety standpoint?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the question. Uh, there was. We saw that condition. Uh, we visited with staff. Uh, we saw our rendering, which really didn't identify how large those windows, you know, could or should be. So the design team got together and we would be happy to entertain a, a, a condition that there'd be a, a window on every landing in a dimension no less than six feet by two feet. We thought that that would open it up more for each landing and does accommodate and, and respond to the police's, uh, original comment.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think furthermore, Brooklyn was comfortable with that, that condition and that kind of mitigation.
Okay. I'll just have Brooke, Brooke come up for a moment. Um, so Brooke, is that something that, uh, we could add as a condition to make sure that that was addressed in there with the potential dimensions as stated by the applicant?
That is, that is a condition that we can, we can add to the, uh, the overall, uh, approval letter.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, additional questions? Commissioner Marshall?
Just for Garrett. I just want to confirm that you'll be rounding up to seven of the 10% of the units?
Uh, for the record, Garrett Gordon, uh, no. Our development agreement, uh, with the city, um, contemplates 64 units and six workforce housing units.
So it's a little less than 10%. It's not 10%?
It would be a little less than 10% with that math. Let me look in here. I know Mr. Salter is probably checking my work. And we initially had, yeah, 10% of the units, and City Council landed on the number six. So to your point, your math is correct. It's a little less than 10%.
I'm sure you guys don't want to round up and find more workforce housing.
I will.
Hit that 10%.
Commissioner.
Go, go beyond. Go 10.4, 5%?
Commissioner, I, um, I always love, uh, being here with you. You, both, both here and TRPA, um, you know, but no, but truly I do. Uh, that said, I, I would certainly stand up here and say yes. However, it was a complicated formula to figure out what the purchase price was going to be, because we had to get an appraisal, because it was city land, and that appraisal was based on so many units of workforce and so many units of, uh, so many units of workforce and so many units of, of market rate. And that kicked out a purchase price that Council was comfortable with. So I'm kind of tied to that number at this point in time. But, but if you're worried about the developer isn't contributing enough, uh, there is also, those of you who visited the site saw that there's some air monitoring equipment on the site owned by Washoe County Health. And Councilman Delgado, uh, required us to chip in an extra 40 grand to move that facility on our dime. So it's a win-win for the city and for, uh, the developer. Thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Comments or discussion? Commissioner Marshall?
In the matter of TXT 20-00-
I think you jumped ahead one.
I'm sorry.
LDC.
I was already in anticipation, sorry. In the matter of LDC 20-00014, State Street Multifamily, based upon the compliance of applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to the following conditions, including the condition, uh, on windows within the stairwells.
Thank you, Commissioner. Have a motion. Looking for a second?
Commissioner Olivas, all second.
Think you have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is, uh, case number TXT 20-00001, Public Parks and Plaza Shading, and I believe our planning manager is making her way down to do the presentation. Leaving us rudderless up here.
All alone. Well, luckily you still have Greg here.
Greg is still here. Greg, do you want to?
You just have Greg step in.
Thank you.
Right?
Thank you.
Thank you for the record, Angela Fu, City Reno Planning Manager. The request before you tonight is a text amendment. In August, City Council initiated a text amendment specifically to look at our shading ordinance. Uh, to give you a little bit of background and history on what it looks like today, I included the full verbiage as what, what it looks like in code today. We basically have two restrictions when it comes to shading. If you are, have a building taller than 35 feet, you have to look at anything around you that's zoned residential. So just to clarify, this excludes mixed-use zoning. This is only impacting properties that are zoned residential. So you cannot shade development zoned residential if you have a building taller than 35 feet. The second piece to that is that the shading ordinance comes into play if you have a building that is casting a shadow on a public park or plaza. This is in any zoning district, which includes the mixed use. So two kind of different nuances there that I wanted to draw to your attention. Now, one of the reasons that Council brought this to our attention and asked us to initiate this text amendment is because we have this new Reimagine Reno Master Plan, and we have a lot of initiatives coming forward, dealing with downtown infill redevelopment. When we look at our current downtown, we have a lot of tall buildings that go over 35 feet in height. We also have some park areas, and that includes plaza areas. So it's not just parks in the sense of like a, a wing-filled park. It's also plaza areas, areas that are not built on that, um, the city owns. So, and in trying to encourage development in the downtown area, one of the impediments we're running up against is this shading ordinance. So they asked us to take a look at it and come up with a recommendation. So what I've done is shown you the area in red that we are proposing, and basically we are excluding the downtown zoning from the, the, the shading ordinance. All of our downtown is already zoned mixed use. So again, um, residential shading pretty much is excluded because we don't have any residentially zoned property within downtown. The properties that would be impacted by this are our public parks and plaza areas. And we, we specifically said, let's limit this to taking the downtown area out. That downtown area, and again, this is areas zoned within our downtown regional overlay, is everything in blue. On the north boundary, we have I-80. On the south boundary, we have California Avenue. On the east and west boundary, we have Wells Avenue and Keystone. So that is the general area that we're concealing, considering the core infill area. So basically what we're doing is trying to bring the code back to actually what it was prior to 2006. In 2006, we updated the code, and that brought forth this actual downtown Reno zoning overlay. With that, we took out this language that's in red, because this previously was part of our zoning code. We said downtown is exempt from the shading ordinance, again, prior to 2006. But for the last 13 years, this has applied to our downtown area. I tried to go back and look at why we took this out. Why do we take this shading ordinance out of our downtown when we actually brought forward the downtown overlay zoning district? I couldn't, I couldn't find anything on the record. I couldn't find anything in the files as to why we did it. It was lumped in with a much broader, um, text amendment, so there was hundreds of pages being brought forth related to downtown, but nothing really specific as to why we took this ordinance language out. So what we're asking for, um, is we're initiating this, this text amendment based on Council recommendation and putting that language back in. So the intent is to be able to, um, develop buildings that are taller than 35 feet in height, and they may shade, um, parks and plazas. Um, some of the comments that we've heard, generally speaking, from, from Council members is, you know, maybe we actually want to shade some of our parks and plazas. When it's 90 degrees during the month of July and we have events going on every day, it's hot. Um, maybe, maybe we want to actually encourage shading in some of these areas. So based on that, this is the ordinance that's proposed. Um, again, this is going back to the way it was prior to 2006, and so this is a very minor modification, a very small text amendment, but, um, we're basically just saying we want to exclude downtown from the, the, the shading ordinance related specifically to parks and plaza areas. So with that, I will open it up to any questions and discussions.
Thank you, Angela. Commissioner Hawkins?
For the record, Commissioner Hawkins, how's that going to affect the, uh, new building that is being proposed between the church and the courthouse?
So at, at this point, this is not specific to any one project. We have a number of new developments within our downtown area proposed that are adjacent to parks and public spaces. So that particular project that you're talking about does not have an application in before us. Um, we have other, again, a, a number of projects have come for discussion purposes that would go straight to building permit or come back before you for entitlement. This would exclude any and all of those projects that are next to a park or a plaza area from triggering this piece of the ordinance. So they would be excluded because they're in downtown.
Even though Park Towers is busy with people living there, considered a residence?
It's based on zoning. But the way the code is written is that if you're in a mixed-use zoning district, you are not zoned residential. So if we look at item number two, um, all of our residentially zoned properties would still have this, this shading ordinance applicable to them. Because all of our downtown is already zoned mixed use, that portion of the text amendment, or that portion of our code, already exempts them from this being applicable to them. This is only specific to the public parks and plaza pieces, not anything affecting the residential pieces.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Mr. Marshall?
I was trading notes with Angela and talked with Council. Only because, uh, you know, I draft code too much of the time. I find the old language a little confusing, um, because it frames it in the terms of standard, or shading standards shall only apply to development outside the standards. So I just took a stab and redrafted it to saying shading standards apply to all development except within the downtown regional center overlay zoning district. So if the Commission feels like that's a, a easier way to understand that applies to everywhere except this, instead of only, uh, to development outside of the, uh, Reno overlay or downtown Reno overlay district, just offer it for what it's worth. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Angela, it sounds like you've spoken with Commissioner Marshall about that. Does staff have any issues with the approach that was indicated?
No, and, and I think it, it's the same, it's the same message. It's the same intent. And so that doesn't change anything from our perspective. It's basically, um, gives us the same amendment that we have proposed, a better language.
Thank you. Additional comments? Or a motion? And I will state for the record, because I would be remiss in not doing that, that there is a longstanding planning commission tradition that you have to make at least one motion on your first meeting. Not that we're getting towards the end of the agenda or anything, Commissioner Valto, but we're getting towards the end of the agenda.
Commissioner Valto, I'd, I'd like to make the motion, but I would like to know the text that you just proposed.
Show the little smiley face. That's perfect.
Uh, I move for, where's it at? I propose a motion to approve TXT 200001, Public Parks and Plaza Shading based on compliance with the applicable findings, uh, with the condition that the ordinance be changed to have C1 read applicability shading standards apply to all developments except within the downtown Reno Regional Center Overlay Zoning District. Based on the applicable findings, and I move to approve the special use permit.
No special use permit.
Text amendment.
Text change. Wrong one. My apologies.
Okay. I have a motion. Well done. First motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion approved. Greg, you want to stay here and have Angela sit over there? Okay. You sure? He's had enough. He's had enough. Okay. Moving on to the agenda, item number seven, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. I guess I will jump in on this one. We had three meetings last week. Uh, one in City of Reno, one in the City of Sparks, and one in Washoe County to, uh, accept testimony on the regional master plan update. Uh, all of that information was put in there, and the Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval. Uh, sent that through to, uh, the Regional Planning Board, which I believe meets on the 10th for approval of that. And there was a meeting scheduled for next Wednesday that was just canceled. So not sure when the next meeting is after that. So, item number eight, staff announcements.
Thank you, Angela Fu, Planning Manager. So just in ways of introductions, Alex, welcome to the Planning Commission. Do you want to kind of give a real quick overview? Tell us a little bit about yourself and your background so the rest of the commission can kind of get to know you a little bit better?
It's nice to meet you all, Commissioner Velto, for the record. Very excited to join the Planning Commission. Excited to work with all of you. I've been to a few of these meetings in the back. I don't know if you've seen me. So usually at the beginning when there's a lot of people still here. But I, so I'm an attorney, so I will ask a lot of questions probably in regards to what the ordinance are. And I look forward to kind of learning those a lot more strongly so I can better apply them. Before I was an attorney, I clerked for Justice Hardesty, which made tonight very interesting because there's a lot of conversation about his order, which I'm looking forward to reading more thoroughly. But I'm happy to join the Planning Commission and I look forward to working with you all.
All right, and then just an update in terms of city council updates. So the Reno logistics zone change, which came before you guys and you approved it, that has been before city council and they also voted to approve it. The Lake Ridge Tennis Club Zone Change, the city council did approve that one. And then I'm sure you've all heard Daybreak was also approved by the city council. In terms of other upcoming events, training wise, we do have the APA Planning Conference. If any of the planning commissioners are interested in going, that is on October 14th through 16th. We do have budget, so you're in, we'll pay for you guys to go if you're interested. It's a two and a half day event, so you're welcome to go. Let me know, send me an email or give me a call and we can get you registered for the event. The other thing I wanted to bring up is packets. Typically, we leave you hard copy packets on the Friday before the Planning Commission meeting. We would like to go to more of an electronic packet in an effort to be more sustainable, save some trees and paper. So I wanted to let you know that starting on your next Planning Commission meeting, we have two options. We can email you and give you the link to the packet. If you don't have access to Wi-Fi, we also can give you a flash drive or a CD with all the packet information. And we can leave that for you on the Friday prior to the Planning Commission meeting. So let me know if you have any comments, questions, concerns. And that's hopefully going to start next month.
Angela, can I just, on that issue, when I access the packet via the web and try to navigate within it, I think it almost always, and maybe it's my clumsy fingers, but it exits me out and then I have to download, you know, then it takes a fairly long time to download that size packet. So I don't know if there's any way that it can be somehow managed. I can do it online. At least I'm connected. But if there's some way they can be presented such that you can navigate a lot easier, I don't know if, you know, if we can, maybe my new advanced Acro, I mean Acrobat Pro, I can get some, you know, bookmarks. But I don't, is there a way that, because I can't, it just is too frustrating.
Sure. And a lot of times, those files are big files. And so they're tough to open depending on how much processing power your computer has. And that's where we can offer this, a flash drive or a disk, whichever your computer prefers and you prefer, and put all the information on that file and that might make it easier for you to open.
Commissioner Velto, is it possible, though, to do some sort of like electronic tabbing? I don't know how difficult that is, but say, I can hear and I click 6.1, 6.2, and it just goes, jumps around?
With the PDF file? Yeah, absolutely. We can do that. Yep. Let's try this out and let's kind of work through the systems if there's kinks. You know, this is, we're open to suggestions. But I'm hoping this is kind of the way that, way of the future. Less paper, more electronics.
The PDF does have bookmarks.
Okay.
So that would help. I'm bringing up the packet online to see if it also has bookmarks.
Okay. Great. So like I said, let's, we'll start next month and then definitely let us know if you guys have problems with it. And if you do, we can work through how to fix those issues.
So what we're going to see up here is laptops on everybody's desk.
You do, I mean, we have some commissioners that bring their own laptops. We at, right now, don't have laptops assigned to the planning commissioners. That's something I think we've talked about as well, is if there is an appetite to, rather than spend money on paper, maybe spend money on a Chrome or something for the commissioners to use while they're at the commission meetings. So that's something we can look at if we need to go down that road, too.
Yeah, I've got a couple at home, but the problem is I hate computers. That's all I got to tell you. I'm a paper man.
I hear you. Yeah.
So item nine, Commissioners' Suggestions for Future Agenda Items. I'm going to suggest right now that in like two meetings, we have an agenda item to discuss the status of the electronic version of the distribution. I think you can just pencil that one in right now. And I'm not sure which commissioner will bring that to the table, but I can guess it's going to be one of two of them. Commissioners, any other suggestions for future agendas? Commissioner Levis?
I don't know if this is a suggestion for future, it could be answered quickly, but a lot of the discussion in the Meridian tonight was about kind of piecemealing the project out. And I guess, just kind of in the natural course of projects, they tend to be in phases. And we wouldn't see all the maps for the Monty Ranch. I think our last map was 27 or something like that. So surely over the 20 years that that's been going on, that would be impossible for them to do that. But, so there's a balance there, I see. And sometimes I've had frustration with not seeing the next steps in projects also. So I don't know the right balance, but I guess it seems that that's the way the planning works, is in steps. And so I'm curious, can the council, or could we even require them to come forward all at once in the first place? Or is that something that that's just the way it works? And even the council can't really say, hey, you got to bring all 27 phases to us right now. So I'd be curious to learn a little bit more about that of what they're required to do, what they're allowed to do, and what we can impose upon them as far as bringing the full package for the whole thing together. I don't know if that's something you know off the top of your head tonight, or?
Yeah, I can give you just the quick version of that. Typically, when you look at big communities with a lot of moving parts, they are part of a master plan community and a planned unit development. So there's typically a master developer and he brings in the infrastructure. And that's where we're looking at, you know, the full project early on. In this case, we do not have a planned unit development. So we have a section of our code that came from a handbook. The handbook expired, so it's no longer part of our code. Because this is not a planned unit development, it is not a handbook, it's not a master plan community, each of these projects are coming independent of each other. And in the Meridian case, it's the same owner for basically six phases. We have other property owners as well. And it just so happens, all of these projects are coming in at basically the same time. Within the next 12 months, I anticipate that the entire Morton, Mortons and Garson area will come forward with some kind of entitlement. So that is, I would say, atypical for normally how we see development that's not a planned unit development. So council and their, one of their previous discussions did ask to see kind of the bigger picture. And because Meridian has come in at different phases, the first phase came in over a year ago. And then that phase is one and two. And currently, there's some court proceedings going on with that. So that's kind of in a holding pattern. Then three and four came forward, which is before you tonight. And then months later, five and six came forward. So again, because they're not tied together, they're not required per our code to come in together. We are trying to work with the different developers and the different applicants to work together collaboratively on all these service issues, whether it's fire, police, water, utilities in general. So while they are not required to come forward as one project, we're working with them to try and bring something forth to you that makes the most sense, understanding they all came in at different times and are kind of following different timelines.
Okay, so I guess to kind of, in my head, to summarize this a little bit, the city council asked for them to come back all at once and that's what the public seems to be kind of pushing on. But we can't, the city council can't require that. They can ask but not require, and, because it's normal zoning, so the developer can come forward as they're ready to come forward.
And the developer has the option of bringing all of the phases together, Meridian in particular. At this point, they have chosen to kind of do it differently because again, it's something that's over a two to three-year window. They've come in with these different phases. When they presented to the NAB and the CAB, they did show their full build-out plan. So they showed all six phases as part of those discussions. And I imagine, because we didn't see a presentation tonight, but looking at historically what they've been doing, they have been showing all the phases and doing more of a global, you know, in-depth discussion, including traffic issues, including fire issues and sewer and water issues. But I think the way it's agendized leads us to think that they're not giving the full picture because we're not voting on the whole project at one time. But again, they have different limitations because of timing of when things went to council and where we're at with different lawsuits with them. So they're kind of in a unique situation.
I guess I kind of emphasized that in the follow-on questions because the public seems to be thinking that this is a requirement that the city council has put on them. And it sounds like it's not. And it's developer's option. And I guess, kind of to some extent, once they open the door and show all six as part of their sales pitch, I guess I would personally expect them to live up to that a little bit better, but it's not, nobody can require it.
And at some point, these projects will likely go back to council on appeal and council may give them that direction again. And that's, again, at the discretion of council if they choose to say we want to see all six phases come in at one time under one agenda item.
You know, we're kind of going a little off our agenda topic, but just to, I do think there is, I don't think it's quite as black and white as, you know, they can come in. They may be able to come in and apply. I think the city has discretion, we have discretion, is within certain time periods and time limits of how we want to consider those applications. So I don't, I don't think it's as cut and dried as that.
No, I agree. I also think that they got a bit of a moral obligation. If that's part of their sales pitch to show all six, then they should show all six. I mean, I don't know the right balance of these trade-offs here.
All right, additional suggestions for future agenda items? Okay, moving on to public comment. Item is for either public comment, any action item, or for any general public comment. I have one request to speak for. From Greg Salter. Who, since it's Greg's night, I'm not even going to turn the clock on in this one, Michelle. No clock. No clock.
Greg Salter, for the record, in case you don't know me. You, for the last couple of years, you've probably been looking down to the end of the table and say, what does that guy do? He doesn't make any noise, doesn't say anything, he's so quiet. Well, the reason that I'm quiet is because to the extent that you do your job, I don't have to speak up. And so the fact that I'm not speaking up says a lot about the way this commission is operating. You are thoughtful, you are prepared, you are professionally adept. And the one thing I like about planning commissions, and I've worked with three of them, the one thing I like about planning commissions is that your thoughts and your deliberations are what I call professionally pure. You're not encumbered or burdened by agendas and worrying about voting and constituents and that sort of thing. And so when you approach a problem, you approach it correctly. And, you know, I've been watching you for two years and I really appreciate you being that way. So what I'm going to suggest to you as I leave is do the best you can to make those people not have to speak up. And, by the way, stop by the Coney Island between 3:00 and 6:00 on Saturday and I'll buy you a drink and thanks.
Before you sit down, Mr. Chairman-
I was going to say something. I will turn it over to you first, Commissioner Marshall.
Only because I get to do what Greg does daily as well. And it's only because he, I think, works so hard and does his job so well is that he gets to sit there and not say anything. And that's a testament to, I think, all the work that you do behind the scenes and in preparation, et cetera. So I want to thank you for your time that you've given to the city and to the other public entities within the state of Nevada. So thank you very much.
Easy there, Tiger. Hey, Greg, I want to thank you. I think you're always there for an answer when we have a question. It's usually the answer we're hoping for, so I appreciate that. I also have to say that we are not the only commission that you have worked with. I know, speaking for other family members, the HRC has benefited greatly from your input and speak very highly of you for that. I'm not sure what other ones you work on because obviously, you know, we keep enough of your time. But I want to thank you for your professionalism. I want to thank you for your sense of humor. And I want to thank you for helping us do the best that we can up here. So thank you. I look forward to seeing you at the Coney. And not just for the drink, so. Thank you very much. All right. Item number 11, adjournment. I'm looking for a motion. Second. All those in favor?
Good night.
Good night. Thank you, everyone.